Good evening. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting for December 4th, 2006. We're starting a few minutes early tonight. So first, I will call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call.
Mayor Marchand.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Frini.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds. Councilor Panalakis. Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Heinz.
Here. Thank you. If we could all stand now, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence before reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilor Grasso to lead us in the pledge, but a moment of silence first for Thomas Fogarty, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we conduct the regular items on tonight's agenda, just one brief note. Dealing with Thomas, as you know, of the events this past Saturday evening, while the matter is still under investigation and certainly details will come out in the future, in the near future, certainly, I think the main thing that we would like to express on behalf of the entire city council and indeed the entire community is the sadness and sympathy that we feel. And I think it's important to express that again tonight, and everybody I've spoken with over the last forty-eight hours, that has been unanimous in terms of that feeling and sentiment. So we feel both for Thomas, his family, the friends of Thomas and his family, and they are in our prayers. With that, let us move on.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to take an item out of order. It would be item seven, approvals of grants and donations, and bring that to the fore.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Any of those in favor of moving that forward in the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. The first item among the grants and donations is the acceptance of donations to the new library building fund from Sean Aiden and Rosie Colvin for $1,000.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And very much appreciate that, and I know a little later in the meeting we'll have other contributions dealing with the library, which is opening shortly. We're very excited about that. The second item are the acceptance of donations for the USS Hartford Dinner that recently took place, the American Legion for $250, Comcast for $500, and Poco's Bow Street Cantina in the amount of $1,000.
Your Honor, I move the acceptance of the donations as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The third item is the acceptance of donation for a bench in the memory of Herbert E. Bunnell in the amount of $500.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the donation for the bench in memory of Herbert Brunel.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Our final item in this section of the agenda is the acceptance of donation to the Portsmouth Fire Department from the Portsmouth Regional Hospital for the firefighter monument in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes nine, nothing as well.
Your Honor, at this time, I would like to make an additional motion analogous to my last to bring number nine on the consent agenda forward at this time.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving that item up?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Very good. The, as you know, the way the consent agenda works is if there are any items that you wish to have pulled out for separate discussion, this would be the time to do so. Otherwise, I'll read the items and then we'll vote on them as a block. So unless I see a request to do so, I will go for it and read these items. In the consent agenda, the first item is the acceptance of anonymous donations to the new library building fund in the amount of $750. The second are a group of items. These are donations to the new library building fund. The first is a $20 contribution from Randy S. Derling and Eileen Purrington Derling, following are $25 contributions from Joseph A. and Judith A. Capobianco, Mariaca Ford and Dennis Casey, R.B. Cole, Rachel A. Connell and Bruce Mackeldowney, Stephen and Greta Mutton, J. Newcom, Newcorn, Mary Ann Reckon. Those are all at the $25 level. A $30 contribution from Jacqueline N. Kingsford, a $35 contribution from James A. and Barbara M. Batten, $50 contributions from the following, John F. and Patricia L. Donahue, Hilda W. Fleischer, Lydia S. Cogshaw, Donna Novelli and Lawrence C. Barr, Robert and Carolyn E. Gardner, Janet A. Taylor Revocable Trust, Suzanne S. Hopkins, Patricia K. and John J. Novello, and Sarah S. Cullen. The following contribution is $75, John Benford and Kendra Ford. The next contribution is for $87, Portsmouth Neuropsychology Center LLC. And the next group are for $100 contributions each, Michelle J. McCarthy trustee, the Michelle J. McCarthy Revocable Trust, Laura L. and Richard M. Burbine, Patricia A. Konig and Brenda J. Schur, Heinz K. Sauck Schubert, Dr. Peter M. and Jenny C. Dinnerman, and Suzanne and Philip Knowlton. Then at the $150 level, Hilda Fleischer. Then $250, which goes towards a total pledge of $500, Mr. and Mrs. Paul Kelly and Sister Aubrey. Also at $250, Craig Hood and Amy Bringer. And then at $500, Donahue Tucker and Sindela PLLC and Judith A. Giles. The next item is a letter from Tracy Poland from the American Diabetes Association requesting permission to hold the Tour de Cure on Sunday, May 6th, 2007. And the final item in this section of the agenda is a letter from Jen Hawley, City Year, requesting permission to hold the Fifth Annual Martin Luther King Day March of Justice on Monday, January 15th, 2007.
I'd move to adopt the consent agenda, Your Honor, with the suggested actions therein included.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. At this point, as we are now slightly past seven o'clock, out of courtesy, wanted to wait for some items until the crowd that expected the meeting to start at seven got some of the other items done ahead of time. So with that, I will now go back for the purpose of the folks around the table here to our next item. Looking to see if Peter Samsic is here. Looking to see if Peter's here.
No.
Oh, wow, look at that. Hi, Peter, sorry about that. We'll give you a second to take off your coat, except I'll just kind of introduce it. Coming soon is Human Rights Day, and local leadership here from Amnesty International is Peter Samsic, familiar to many of us. We have put together a proclamation to signify the importance of Human Rights Day and asked Peter if he could come in tonight and right on cue, and indeed he has. I've asked Councilor Chris Dwyer before, Peter, if you had any remarks you'd like to add, requested of Councilor Dwyer that she read the following proclamation.
Whereas the seacoast area is home to Chapter 550 of Amnesty International, the worldwide human rights group waging a campaign to reaffirm the rights in the Geneva Conventions and international agreements pertaining to the treatment of all prisoners. And whereas Sunday, December 10th, is International Human Rights Day and the day the Nobel Peace Prize is awarded, we remember the contributions of such past winners as President Theodore Roosevelt in 1906 for the Portsmouth Peace Treaty. And whereas December 10th also is the anniversary of the 1948 United Nations adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, thanks to the efforts of former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt, and whereas local Amnesty International Chapter 550 is celebrating the release of one adopted prisoner from Guantanamo, mourning the death of another in Iran although his siblings escaped to the United States, and will continue to work for a human rights victim in Eritrea. Now therefore, I, Steve Marchand, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the city council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 10th, as Human Rights Day 2006 in the City of Portsmouth, and urge my fellow citizens to remember with gratitude all those who risked reputations and even death to ensure the preservation of human dignity throughout the world. Given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this fourth day of December 2006, Steve Marchand, Mayor of Portsmouth.
So Peter, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Mayor Marchand and city councillors, I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. Obviously, our organization feels very strongly that it's very important to remember every year the anniversary of Human Rights, Human Rights Day in particular because of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and also because as an organization for thirty-five years we have been fighting to hold up a mirror to governments throughout the world to let them know that their agreements on international agreements are binding and they should abide by them, and at the same time taking care of human rights victims that are in prison throughout the world. So we appreciate the opportunity to have this declaration, proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, if you'd like to come up, we'll give that to you, and appreciate all the work you do on behalf of people. Our next portion of the agenda is, I think, a rather exciting and unusual opportunity here. A while back, a family member of Zachary who's over here informed me that we have quite, and I'm aware that we have an awful lot of talent in the community, but sometimes you don't know exactly how deep that talent runs, and I think this is one such example of that. Zachary Adenolfi, who is here, recently, a little earlier this year, participated in a competition where he excelled, to say the least. After you've performed, I've got a mayor's award I'd like to give you as part of your accomplishment, but basically, he represented Portsmouth and hopefully I get the regional classification correct, the Northeast United States. He did awfully well, I think, finishing the top two in the region for your age class and then moving on to Ireland for an international competition as really one of the top harp players, and I think I'm not overstating it, one of the top harp players in the world in his age group, and excelled at that level as well. So there's an awful lot of talent in the community in a myriad of ways, and clearly starting at some of the youngest ages. So when we heard that, we wanted to see if there's a way that you might be able to come in. It's an impressive instrument as well, and play us a tune. If I'm not mistaken, the name of the piece is "The Rights of Man," which would seem apropos given what we've just heard as well. So without further ado, Zachary, if you don't mind, we really appreciate you being here this evening. That was really nice. That was wonderful. Zachary, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I put together a mayor's award for you as well. I'll read it, though. Says much of what was said earlier. Presented to Zachary Adenolfi, congratulations on your achievement representing Portsmouth and the United States at the International All-Ireland Irish Music Festival as one of the world's top harp players. Pretty darn impressive. Congratulations. Zachary, your music said an awful lot right there, if you wanted to say anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the seacoast area for helping me raise money to go to Ireland and all the different people and donations that have come to me to help me go to Ireland. Just wanted to thank you.
Great. Thank you again. Nice. That was great. You know, as soon as you get a CD, please let me know. Something like that. We have a few presentations this evening. The first one is a presentation of donation to the new library building fund regarding naming opportunities. This involves Parade Hotel Investors LLC for $5,000. There's an additional pledge of $10,000 for the naming of the second floor meeting room for the Hilton Garden Inn. And I understand that there is a presentation affiliated with this. Jeff Johnston, I believe, is here?
Yes.
Ah, there we go. As well as Mary Ann List.
Hi, I'm Jeff Johnston. We're the developers. I'm with Catharus Private Investments. We're the developers of the Harbor Hill condominiums, the Hilton Garden Inn, and the owners of the Parade Office Mall. So I just want to say one of our objectives corporately is to invest in the communities which we're doing business in. When we were approached to participate in the fundraising effort, we thought it'd be a great fit, and I've had a chance to tour the facility. I think it's a beautiful building, and I want to congratulate the community. I think it'll be a great asset, and I wish you the best with the library. Thanks.
I think we all know at this point that one of the things we want to be able to do in that building is allow people from the community to meet in various ways, and the meeting rooms are going to be one of the most important ways that we'll be able to do that, to offer our meeting rooms not only for programs that we can present but also for groups and organizations in town that need a place to meet for their programs. So we are very grateful for the help that we've gotten from the Hilton Garden Inn.
Thank you again. Our next set of presentations, actually, may I ask Mary Ann to stick her out near the microphone, is we have, I believe, an additional five this evening, sizable and very generous contributions from a number of folks. Perhaps between Mary Ann, Phyllis, and Paul, if you'd like to take it from here and go through, like several very generous folks up next.
The first item on the agenda is the $50,000 contribution from the partnerships of the Kane Company for our internet cafe in the library. This really follows beautifully with the concept of what we said about the meeting rooms. The cafe will offer us an opportunity for people to meet and have community in a more informal way in the library, a concept that's a little bit different from what we used to have in libraries that said one can never drink anything other than water in a library because you might hurt a book. The library is now a real part of the community. We want people to come in and sit down, enjoy each other, enjoy those things that we have to offer in the library. As we're beginning to see the library really shape up this week, we see that one can walk right into the front door of the library and sit down in a wonderful little cafe-type area and look out onto a great courtyard. So we're very grateful for this contribution from the Kane Company, the partnerships of the Kane Company.
Great. If you'd like to continue on, or I know, I think I saw, ah, yes, I thought I saw. If you'd like to come on up. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm here with Mark Stebbins, who's a new resident of Portsmouth, I might add. And Mark said that because I had spent so much time in the library as a young child, that this was a really appropriate donation for us to make, and I was being facetious.
We were going to be polite, so.
That was after a couple of drinks, but I just did move to Portsmouth. My partner, Mark Schleicher, and I, who just built the hotel out in the Commerce Center area, when Michael approached us about this, we felt it was very important to give back to the community, and what a great place to do it but the library. So thank you for the opportunity to do it, and we're hoping this library really takes off and becomes a major part of the community.
Thank you very much.
The next contribution is from Susan and Robert Thorison. The Thorisons have certainly been a part of this community for a long time. They've been friends of the library for a long time. Bob active in the last time that the library had an addition. This time, the Thorisons are supporting the new library with monetary contribution. Their contribution will be used to fund something we're calling the Production Center. The Production Center will allow people to really print, copy, put together great presentations, beautiful productions in the way that all of us are used to doing these days. So we're grateful for the opportunity to offer the Production Center to the public in Portsmouth.
That's great. Let's see where Bob are here.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Paul McCacklin, and I'm honored to represent Jean Sawtelle, who has contributed $5,000 in the name of her late husband, Joe. I could go on for quite a while about Joe, but I would just say that he had a rare concept of community, beginning with a strong education for its members, and that's evidenced by the Futures Fund and the Greater Piscataqua Community Foundation, which he devised and started, basically, and I think it's only fitting that he be remembered in a spot in the library with this gift from his widow. Thank you.
The next contribution that we would like to speak about tonight is from Jay McSherry. It's a $5,000 contribution given by Jay in honor of himself and also of Jumpin' J's Restaurant and of a fifth grade teacher who was the person who told him that he could do anything he wanted to in life, and he certainly has done quite a bit in our city. He gave me some words that he would like for me to say tonight. He says that he is extremely proud of the City of Portsmouth and of the new library, and he and with his restaurant are honored to be a part of what's going on in the city right now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bob Shanes, and I'm very pleased to have had the opportunity on behalf of my wife and myself to contribute to this very wonderful learning and educational edifice that now exists in Portsmouth. The new library is certainly something we can all be very proud of, and I'm just very pleased to have the opportunity to participate in some small way in that effort. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Eldridge, former trustee and participated in the fundraising for the library, and I would just like to thank all of the donors previously mentioned this evening. And it is because of all of them that the trucks pulled up today and started the move into the new library. So we want to thank you and everyone who's helped.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, I'd like to move to approve and accept the aforementioned donations to the new library building fund as listed.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And again, our gratitude to all involved both tonight and those in the past, as was indicated. Our third item is the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Boards and Commission Appointment Process Report. This is regarding turnover on city boards and commissions.
Aye.
I don't know if it's, oh, there, okay. The chair of the committee is Eric Spear. Eric has finally agreed to come by tonight and present a short presentation just along those lines.
That's right. Thank you. Again, my name is Eric Spear, and I'm the chair of the committee. One of our initial charges last year was to create a balance of encouraging fresh blood and healthy turnover into cities' boards and commissions while retaining interested, engaged, and responsible long-term members. We spent months trying to find a mechanism that would yield a nice balance for the city's boards. We looked at other cities. We discussed creating new boards to oversee turnover. We looked at the boards that we serve on for ideas, and we talked with members of the community. In the end, we decided on two recommendations. The first is currently, board members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by a vote of the council. We propose to supplement the packet that each councillor gets so that in addition to the appointee's application, the councillor would also get a list of all the members of the board and the years they served. We recognize that different boards have different needs for longevity, but we believe that with this additional information, the city council will have the ability to engineer a proper balance of new members and experienced members. The second recommendation is this. We hope that with the additional information provided to the city council, the city's boards and commissions will have a healthy mix of turnover and experience. However, we understand that there are cases where members end up staying on boards too long. With that in mind, we recommend that there be an upper limit in the city charter on the number of terms someone can serve uninterrupted on a given board. This limit varied from nine years to twenty years depending on the board. So you ask, what's the next step? Boards and commissions in Portsmouth have varied legal foundations. We suggest that the city council ask the city to research the new limits to find out the necessary steps to implement them as law. Since this committee met, I talked with the chairs of these committees to get their feedback, and I'd like to relay some of that to you now. I'm sure you won't be surprised by the diversity of opinion. Some are violently opposed to any term limits. Some thought it was a good idea. Others thought it was fine, but also wanted council rep to be term limited as well, not sitting on this council, but the rep on the board or commission that they serve on. They wanted council discussions of appointees to be private, to give a chance for airing things that you wouldn't want to say on TV, of course. And we also wanted someone that we talked to wanted a discussion of how to remove a board member, which we haven't addressed. I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will move forward with the next step.
Great. If we have any questions, I see, Councilor Whitehouse.
There should be a motion, Your Honor, in reference to what he's recommending, and I'd like to make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move that we empower the city legal department to research the above boards and commission and to find out the necessary steps to implement these term limits.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about that motion?
Just if, Your Honor.
Or perhaps some clarification, maybe?
I guess this is going to be a substantial amount of work on the part of the city attorney's office, so I just want everybody to be aware, it may not happen overnight, and I hope that if we do all this work and all this research, that when we bring it back, you just don't say, "We don't want term limits." I think it's important to understand that if we're going to have staff spend multiple hours doing this research and presenting a plan, I'm not, I mean, I'm not pro or con relative to the term limit, but I guess what my suggestion is, before you actually direct the staff to do this multiple hours' worth of work, maybe there ought to be a discussion at a future council meeting about the whole policy issue of term limits.
Right. Right.
That might make a lot of sense in terms of it may, besides, you may find out that there is tremendous support, opposition, or what I suspect may be the case, somewhere in between the two extremes. And that may help focus the work, limit it, sharpen it, because I think at our best is when we're directing work to our city staff that actually is relevant to what is likely to occur after the work is done. So with that suggestion in mind, I don't know, maybe we could amend.
Yeah, Your Honor, I only brought. Your Honor, I only brought this before you because this is a recommendation from the committee, and this is in front of me, so if the mayor and the rest of the council thinks that this motion is not necessary, or if it would put a burden upon our legal department, I'll withdraw the motion if you think it's...
Well, if I might, Counsel Whitehouse?
Yes.
What might be suggestible would be, if it's acceptable to you as a friendly amendment, that in the first instance, we have a work session and thereafter determine whether or not we need to act on your motion.
Right. We table or we withdraw? What would you suggest? As Assistant Mayor?
If you just withdraw, we haven't voted on it.
All right. Your Honor, I'll withdraw my motion that I presented.
And perhaps we could set a work session.
I think what we do is, in the relatively near future, set a work session where we can discuss the larger, and also the information that you've compiled up to now. We'll have a chance to discuss that information as a group, and I think there's probably a lot of value in that, too. I see a few hands. Let me go with the Assistant Mayor and then Counsel Dwyer.
Just in setting the work session, we'd want to make sure that the committees were noticed, certainly the chairs and the committees involved, so that they have an opportunity to be present.
May I suggest, Your Honor, if for the December 18th meeting, we come back with a suggested date?
That'd be fine.
That'd be fine, and I think Counsel Dwyer.
I agree with all that, and I just wanted to make the point that the concept of term limits interacts with a number of other things that are hinted at in the report. I mean, first of all, thank you very much for doing the report, that I think we would want to talk about in a work session prior to deciding what we would want the legal department to do. You know, let me just give one example. It kind of stuns me, as somebody who's been on many nonprofit boards, when I look at the years of terms that are being recommended, let alone the years of terms that we have. And so, an immediate question is, you know, how we got to this point where we have different years of terms for different things? That might be easily answered, and I wouldn't want to necessarily have the legal department spend time on that if there's a whole other set of issues that comes up. So, I think we need a surfacing of issues around this whole set of ideas, and there may be other things around boards that we need to surface at the same time, so that we're not looking at term limits as a single issue out of context.
That's right. I guess one thing I would say is, and I think, Eric, you'd agree, I think the committee would agree with this, that term limits, whether you are for them or against them in the macro view, are not in and of itself a goal. They are a means to a theoretical goal, which could be, an attempt, the goal may be, to try to balance experience with fresh blood, or there are other perfectly defendable goals, but this is simply a tactic or a means of achieving that goal. So, I think Counsel Dwyer brings up a good point, that we don't want to make the means the goal.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Just one brief comment, Your Honor. In serving on the committee and coming to that, I think that Eric Spear has rightly given us a fine report. For the councillors, the general sort of dividing line that we'd been looking at was, land use boards typically require greater and longer lead time and expertise than some other boards. Not to in any way diminish the importance of other boards, but land use boards are technical, quasi-judicial in nature, and require lead time to learn. So, the committee was sensitive to that sort of thing. This is not broad brush, it's thoughtful, and I would think that a thoughtful discussion with council president and city clerk and people who are aware of how this has worked over time will help illuminate us all as council members.
That would be great. Counsel Whitehouse?
Yeah. I noticed this report was put together November 10th, almost a month. Now, at that time, they had about 18 vacancies on various boards and commissions. Is that still, there's still that many vacancies, do you know?
I think there's a lot, there's many actually, under consideration this evening, so that's part of the judicial two-step process, so...
Just one more question. Do the committee think of establishing a job fair, as we've heard a lot of people do out there? In the evening, have a job fair at this council chambers where people can come in, ask questions, get advice?
If I might, and I think Eric can certainly elaborate, we certainly want to take an opportunity to provide that kind of track day, or whatever it is, for people to come in and shop around, have committee members there so they can talk with the public and interact. That's certainly on the docket. I think a work session will help sort of open it up and give you a sense as to where we might go further, and it would be helpful to get informal council input at this time so that direction will be appropriate.
And certainly having Eric there is critical in that, I know you'll be able to encapsulate a lot of the discussion that will actually address, a lot of the questions that are getting asked tonight are, in different ways, have been discussed at past meetings. So, may be able to not have to recreate the wheel, and there's been a lot of work put into it already, so I think this would be a logical next step. So, it sounds like for the next meeting, we will finalize a date, and then certainly some key members of key boards, Eric, legal counsel, that we'll have folks around a table for a work session that hopefully will not be too far in the future after the next meeting. So, if that seems to work for folks, it seems like a pretty logical next step.
Sounds good. Thank you. Eric, thank you again. I know you put a lot of work into it. Okay, our next item is the acceptance of, bless you, acceptance of minutes from the November 13th, 2006 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Our next section is the public comment session. That has typically, we have a three-minute limit per speaker. This evening, we only have one speaker, and I see it deals with Martin Luther King Day. One thing I should note, and I see our friend Bobby Kessling here, along with Pon, both representing City Year. One thing I should note, and this may have been right before you got here, and I apologize if I'm stealing your thunder, because we started slightly before seven, we moved a couple of typically, we'll say, less-than-exciting items up. One of them was a consent agenda. One of the items in the consent agenda was the request to have the MLK Day festivities, which we approved, I believe, the motion, in that case, was to move to the city manager with power. So, certainly, if you want to speak about, and it's a great day, I remember last year it was, I think, a wonderful occasion, if you want to speak about that, pump it up, or anything else regarding with the day, feel free, but I just want to give you the heads-up ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I heard that approved a second ago. Thank you for letting me speak for just a brief moment. My name is Bobby Kessling. I'm community director for City Year New Hampshire, but more importantly, for this evening, I'm representative of the Martin Luther King Day March of Justice Community Committee. And as a representative, I wanted to extend our thanks. This event would be impossible without the support of the city of Portsmouth, and you've been there since the beginning of it, so thank you very much for it. And I'd also like to just share a little bit of our excitement for it. It is, some of the highlights of the event include a rally, and we hope to have about 400 community members there, representing a variety of groups and faith organizations, basically displaying the diversity in the Seacoast region. And we're going to be leaving from Portsmouth Middle School. There's the March Through the City. There's also a volunteer fair with a variety of volunteer opportunities for all those who come, and then in the afternoon, community service projects and activities. Some of the committee, just to publicly recognize them and all the work that they put in, the committee involves the Seacoast Martin Luther King Coalition, Portsmouth Middle School, the Seacoast Amnesty International, Portsmouth Police Department, the Seacoast Peace Response, University of New Hampshire, Student Conservation Association, New Hampshire Parks, Maricor, and then the Volunteer Action Center of United Way of the Greater Seacoast. So, it's quite a community collaboration for a community event, and we're very much looking forward to celebrating Martin Luther King Day as a day on, and to continue to remember and to celebrate his work of building the beloved community. And so, I'd also like, as I'm up here, to invite all of you out on the 15th of January. And then, again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, City Year, for all the work you do and a number of activities. You're a key part of helping get the message out about the power of volunteerism, the power of getting involved in your local community. So, one thing I realized is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the public comment sheet we may have in starting at the meeting early, because we ended our pre-meeting work session early, there may be a few folks here who intended, I see a few nodding heads, and as the meeting goes on and as people's segments end, and they typically will leave because they don't want to be here for the entire meeting, and why should they? And there are some folks that aren't leaving yet. As I look down, I say, hmm. So, I realize that probably that's at least part of the explanation. So, unless I have any significant pushback from the council, I see it won't be a super significant number. Perhaps you could come up, and I apologize for doing that, and hopefully this will provide that opportunity. So, yeah, if you just don't mind your name and address, no matter how familiar your face is, for the folks at home, that would be much appreciated.
A lot of us got here, some of us got here at seven, and we didn't get a chance to sign This is Kim O'Connell from Portsmouth Listen Steering Committee, and can you...
Leo Gagnon. And Laurie Gagnon, also with the Portsmouth Listens.
And season's greetings to you all. We just wanted to make a few comments about the affordable housing ordinance, which is getting a first reading tonight. First, from Phase Two of the study circles that were used for the master plan, the housing groups report says, "Portsmouth is at a crossroads, and we need to make choices now before it's too late to affect change or be the effect of change. It is our belief that we need to think about learning to live differently and expanding our housing community to include all types of income levels. The data we've seen indicates a lack of balance." And that was input from, into the master plan. Second, our steering group discussed the possibility of some community dialogue around the current ordinance, but we didn't feel, in the time between the first reading and the public hearing and the vote, we could probably get that done. However, we did want to express our willingness, since we understand that the ordinance is a model that can be used citywide, that if in any way study circles could create a better climate through the neighborhoods and throughout the city for affordable housing, we wanted to express our willingness to facilitate study circles on that or any other of the zoning issues. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that was here this evening for the purpose of public comment? Okay, just want to make sure I presented that opportunity.
Your Honor, at this time, I would like to make another motion to take something out of order and consideration of those present, and I would like you, councillors, to direct your attention to Roman numeral 11A, number three, under the city managers' items which require action. That would be the request to extend the lease agreement for Poco Diablo Inc. to expire November 1, 2007.
Do I have a second on that motion to move this up?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. Well, I'll move that to the city manager, although the Assistant Mayor did a pretty good job of getting that warmed up, anyway.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the Assistant Mayor did indicate, there is a proposal to extend the lease agreement for Poco Diablo Inc. until November 1st, 2007. And as indicated in my memorandum, there is a letter from John Gollum requesting the extension, along with a draft of the lease, part of which will be to report back to the city council sometime in June on issues on potential long-term lease or other policy issues that might be related to this.
Very good. Is there a motion on that, Your Honor?
Yes. Yeah, Your Honor, I move to extend the Poco Diablo's lease agreement until November 1, 2007.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. With that, let us move back to the order that we have. I believe our next segment in the agenda is the consideration of resolutions and ordinances. We have two items in this section. The first one is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 15 of the ordinances by the adoption of a new section, 10-1508, entitled Residential Density Incentive Planned Unit Development, RDIPUD, ordinance, addition of definitions to Article 1, Section 10-102A of the zoning ordinance. Do I get a motion on this? Yes, Counsel Dwyer.
Move to recommend the city council pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on the ordinance for our meeting at December 18th.
Very good.
Second.
I hear a second. Do I have any comments or questions? Yes, Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. One I have, and that is under MC, and that's the covenant legal bindings of the document executed and restricting the affordable house units, and it continues to say, "The covenant shall be the longest legally binding terms." My concern is, is how long are those terms? Because I want to make sure that this is clear enough so that when, if this is approved and these units are built, that they remain that style of housing. And what is the longest term that we can put on here? Is it something, is it 99-year, like you do leases? Or can we just get clarification on that, Your Honor?
This language is deliberately written in a fashion which would allow some flexibility, primarily for the developer, and this is throughout the whole ordinance, to make proposals to the planning board, which the planning board can accept or negotiate changes in. To some degree, the length that the arrangement can be made binding would depend upon what the proposal was from the developer. But frankly, it's my belief that 99 years is entirely realistic, and that under some kinds of proposals, we would make the affordability component indefinite in term.
Your Honor, if I might, if the council moves forward on this, just to be aware that we will have all the staff available. We're going to make a formal presentation before the public hearing, and we'll go through the entire ordinance, just for your information. Thank you, if I may. And I'm glad that that's happening. I just wanted to bring that up ahead of time, so that if there was having to be anything changes, or any writing, or anything else, that that was said, so the legal department could be on it beforehand. But my concern is, as much as I think this is a terrific idea, I would just hate to see that somebody built it, and then a few years, you know, sometime down the road, this thing unravels, and, you know, all of a sudden, we have more expensive condos.
Very good. Counsel Whitehouse, I saw your hand, okay?
The city manager answered the question I wanted.
Very good. And again, presuming this passes, there will be, I think, a very full discussion, including a public hearing, two weeks from tonight. Unless I see anything else. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. The second item...
Your Honor, if I may?
Sure.
I hate to move in on this, but out of deference to another individual present...
Yes.
If we could move to suspend the rules for the purpose of consideration of Item 11A, Number Four, under the city manager, request to extend license agreement for Trash Compactor on Siri Street.
Could I have a second to...
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That also passes unanimously.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just again, this is an extension of the Compact on Siri Street. It would be to propose to have an extension to November 30, 2007. Also, within the lease agreement, there is a provision that we've added that would require us to sit down and talk about alternatives to the Trash Compactor sometime in July, to see if there are other alternatives that we can do, other technologies we can use. So, I want to work very closely with the businesses down there, but I think we need the lead time to have those discussions. So, we're recommending that we extend this to November 30th, 2007.
Very good. Do I have a motion in that regard?
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Counsel Panalaco's not even seated yet and already seconded. That's very impressive.
Move this along.
There you go. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Our next item, going back to resolutions and ordinances, is a third and final reading of ordinance by the creation of Chapter 16, Utilities, Article 1, Water Ordinance, the deletion in the entirety of Chapter 11, Article 9, Section 11.9, Cross-Connection Control and Backflow Prevention, amending Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 14.7, Water Supply, and amending Chapter 14, Article 1, Section 14.103, Services, Equipment, Facilities for One at a time.
Your Honor, I'd like to make motion to pass third and final reading of the ordinance as submitted.
Very good.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. You may recall, or for those of Counsel Panalaco's, we did a little skipping around earlier in the meeting, we already did the consent agenda, and so we will move on to presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. Four items in this. The first is a letter from Julie Slaton Frank of the South Church requesting permission to place a dumpster in the alley between the South Church and the building that houses upscale resale.
Move to refer to the city manager with power.
Second.
Discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Second item, a request from Helen Marks, spiritual readings by Duchess, to relocate an A-frame sign to a new location in front of the establishment.
Move to City Manager with power.
Second.
Oh, sorry?
Little discussion, Your Honor.
Yes, Counselor.
I viewed that area, the area where she's requesting that A sign. I think we'd better be very careful on Market Street especially. The sidewalks are very narrow. This A-frame will be directly in front of a parking meter and it's just a stairway leading up to her business. It's just a concern, that's all. There are several A-frames on that side of the street, all the way to the end of where the parking lot is on Market.
I'll review this with Jason.
Very good.
And just also to note, Your Honor, if I might, that we're going to waive, unless the council has objection, the last couple of months of the fee, since it's moving of the sign.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That also passes unanimously. The next item is a letter from Marie Folvey regarding pedestrian safety at the crossing of Route 1 and Beverly Hill Road.
Move to send this to the Parking, the Traffic and Safety Committee with a report back.
Second.
For a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Final item in this section, a letter from Helen Taft, Executive Director of Families First, on behalf of Community Campus?
Yeah.
Requesting permission to replace the small Community Campus signs currently posted on several roads with a larger sign that lists the names of each of the agencies.
I'd move to refer that to the Planning Board for a report back.
Second.
I hear a second. Any questions or comments?
No, it's just, if I may?
Sure.
Would there be Traffic and Safety for that one or for Planning?
I think, at this point, I think it would be Planning Board. David? Yeah, I think we'd probably start with Planning Board, Counselor.
Thank you. It may end up in your neighborhood down the line, I suppose. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That also passes nine, nothing. We are now under the City Managers item. I know a few of the items were addressed earlier, so I believe there are four action items remaining.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item deals with the regulation of formula businesses in the historic district and regulation of amusement park, outdoor recreation, industrial and general business districts. Just as you recall, back in October, the City Council met in a work session with the Planning Board to discuss various land use issues as they relate to the implementation of the city's new master plan. As a result of that discussion, both Assistant Mayor Farini and Counselor Smith requested that staff provide a zoning ordinance amendment that would have the effect of regulating the location and operation of formula businesses within the historic district. Working in conjunction with the city staff, the city zoning consultant, Tainter, has prepared the attached formula business restriction. Both Assistant Mayor Farini and Counselor Smith are requesting the City Council refer this matter to the Planning Board for a report back. Also, as a result of that same work session in October, there was discussion by the Assistant Mayor regarding zoning ordinance amendment that would have the effect of regulating amusement park, outdoor recreation within the industrial and general business districts. And what we are recommending is both these items be sent over to the Planning Board for a report back. At that time, the City Council can decide if it wishes to proceed with any first readings.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
The next item, Your Honor, is a housekeeping item, basically, last meeting, the City Council voted to join the, to sign the agreement with ICLI, and part of that is membership to the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, the acronym ICLI, and that is in the amount of $600. And that I'm asking that we take from contingency. And also, in addition, I just want to advise the City Council that we're in the process of applying for a grant or an intern to help us with doing some of this work, and hopefully we will get that grant. I just, the Greater Piscataqua Community Foundation has been very supportive in many of our endeavors as it relates to sustainability, and we're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, that we'll be able to continue with them on this. So that's, that would be nothing, if we're lucky with that, we would then avoid any costs for the intern out of the general fund, but we do need $600 to pay our membership dues to ICLI.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. I think I heard the second. Just Counselor Whitehouse.
I just want to speak on that. I'm glad the City Manager mentioned that it'd be more than just a dues card that we would be receiving for $600, because if you remember back in November, our last meeting, I did make a comment that I was going to support the program, but I'll read what I said. Counselor Whitehouse spoke in support of the committee and their recommendation, but he did indicate that he does not want to see this appear as an added item or financial burden to the city. But $600 is, I think is well spent, but I knew it was coming. I knew there'd be a fee, but that's all right.
Don't need to apologize. At any rate, unless there are other comments, we kid because we care. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor, of skipping down the next two items that have already been acted on. We come up with a request for approval of Strawberry Bank easement. Strawberry Bank has obtained approvals from the Planning Board to construct a building to be known as the Carter Center at 65 Washington Street. The Planning Board stipulated that Strawberry Bank obtain an easement from the city to install within the public right-of-way necessary foundation, insulation, drains, and roof overhangs. The Planning Board recommends that the City Council approve this easement. Therefore, I'm asking for approval to move forward.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The last item for action under my name is proposed acceptance of Brigham Lane as a city street. Attached is a letter from Michael Brigham, manager of Changing Places LLC, requesting that the road they constructed, the enforcement known as Brigham Lane, be formally accepted by the city. Also attached is a memorandum from Steve Parkinson, the Public Works Director, indicating that the Public Works Department has inspected the construction of this roadway and finds that it meets all city standards and requirements. The Public Works Department recommends the acceptance of Brigham Lane by the City Council, and I concur.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Whitehouse, I apologize.
I took a ride up there today. It's a beautifully developed area. I think that's the elevation is probably one of the highest points in the city. Some beautiful homes.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Just a couple informational items, Your Honor. That's all my action items. One, that next Monday night at 6:30 PM, we will be having a legislative delegation meeting. I encourage council members to call me if there are items that you want on that agenda. I'll try to get that out by Wednesday, so if you could let me know. Also, just, there are other updates here on the library donations. As of November 28, 2006, we have a total of $633,547 in donations for the library.
That's great.
That's all, I have, Your Honor, unless there are questions for me.
Any questions for the City Manager this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to my section of the agenda. I think Counselor Whitehouse had mentioned earlier that there were a number of vacancies in the neighborhood at this time of year, and you'll see that there are a number of appointments or reappointments that will be for consideration in this meeting and for vote at the next meeting. They include the appointment of Gary Lowe to the Cable Television Communications Commission as an alternate member, and then a number of reappointments, two of them to the Planning Board, the reappointment of Jerry Hickmonick and Anthony Covielo, and then several reappointments dealing with the ZBA, Alan Juice, Duncan McCollum, and Arthur Parrott. If you have any questions, concerns, recommendations, feel free to contact me. I'm easy to find, and I'd be glad to take and answer any concerns you might have. We also have four items, four individuals whose appointments were considered at the last meeting and thus will be voted upon this evening. The first is a reappointment of Everett Eden to the Economic Development Commission.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The second is the appointment of Robert M. Heft to the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Dog Committee.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The third is the appointment of William Gondel to the Save the Old State House Blue Ribbon Committee.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the final is the appointment of James Horrigan to the, as a regular member, going from alternate to regular, rather, to the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So thank you. I think we've got a great group of people willing to serve. Please go to the city's website if you are wondering what to do and you have some time and gifts to give. That's cityofportsmouth.com. Also, if you are receiving the weekly electronic newsletter, I believe that we now put openings, and I believe if we're not doing it soon, we will be putting openings coming up, that I know that's something we're discussing, so that you get a little heads up before the appointments actually become open. And of course, you can call my office. Call 431-2000 as for my office, and if you have questions or interest, that's another way that we can get you hooked up with different opportunities. With that, we move on now to Counselor Smith to deal with traffic and safety and parking related items.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the motion to accept the action sheet from our November 20 meeting.
Second.
Unless anyone has any specific questions on the action sheet on this one. It was pretty straightforward on a lot of the issues.
Very good. Any questions?
Just one.
Yes.
I'm glad to see they're taking a serious look at Aldridge Road, which many neighbors have complained, cuts and speeding and.
Thank you. On that particular one, we had done a stealth stat on that, just to find out what the speeding situation is on that, and found out that most people are within the speed limit on that road. However, we are looking at doing some other issues on there, see if, for curbing down at the end of the street where it's very wide, where it meets in, to try to narrow that down, because seems, what's happening is, is people coming off Middle, coming on to Aldridge at a high rate of speed in that area. So if we can change the curbing, we'll try to get that into the CIP to bring that down. But as things came along, when they did the stealth stat, they found that most people were within the speed limit. I think there was one car that was, had a very dramatic high rate of speed on there, and the police are going to keep up enforcement on that to try to get that under control.
Very good. So we've had a motion, a second? I see a hand. It's Counselor Reynolds.
Mayor, could I just ask Counselor Smith to elaborate a little bit on the meaning of the action that was adopted with respect to the Middle Street at Lincoln Ave. and Cabot? Request for flashing yellow light. If you recall, that was on the committee's agenda as a result of a letter from a nine-year-old boy who lives down the street from me, that in between Middle and Islington, and he crosses Middle en route to Little Harbor School, and I have experienced that myself, the same phenomenon he talks about, that you step out to cross that street and cars are coming at a great rate of speed, usually in excess of the speed limit, and you step out and you can get, really feel pretty caught and endangered, so.
Thank you. Counselor Smith could? Yep, would be happy to. Certainly, on that particular issue with, in regards to Ace's letter, we went out there, we looked at it, we felt that it was not a safe place to put a crosswalk for exactly that reading, reason. The road is a sharp corner and people are coming around and you're right on top of the street. There is a crosswalk that is a little bit further up the road, so what we've asked is that the Department of Public Works look at restriping that and maybe in putting something in the road to say, "Crosswalk ahead." But to attempt to put a crosswalk at that particular location because of the curvature of the road, even if you put one there, people, you're not going to see it, because people do come around that corner quickly, and we just felt it was an unsafe place to attempt to put a crosswalk. As for the flashing sign, I know that was something that we're going to be getting a report back, but at this time, it was just going to be the paint on the street to notify drivers that there is a crosswalk ahead, and some of those, because those cost of those lights and the operation of those lights is a large expense.
Okay, so the signage?
Unless Mr. Parkinson wants, is anything else he wants to add to it.
So appropriate pedestrian signage means signage for?
On, that'll be on the pavement.
Cars that will say to drivers, "Crosswalk ahead."
Correct.
And then the crosswalk, if I'm correct, is actually in the middle of the block between Union and?
Madison.
Pass?
Madison.
Union and Madison. It actually goes to the front door of the Neighbor Market, so it's kind of a funny.
Yeah, and there's another one that's further up the road, around the bend.
Past.
Try to put one at the bend of the road, such as you're saying, when you step off, it's like you find yourself caught. That is not the place we want to try to put a crosswalk, because, you know, whether you're in a crosswalk or not, it's, you'll still get caught because people come around that corner faster.
If I could, he's talking about Union Street, because I know he lives on Union Street.
But wouldn't it go to Little?
And Union is farther, farther from the bend than the current crosswalk. The current crosswalk is up the block closer to the bend. Like I say, it goes to the front door of Neighbor Market, and there's.
That's the one, that's the one further down that we're going to have restripped.
To go to Little Harbor School, wouldn't it be more advisable to walk down to the lights at the corner of Middle Street in summer and cross with the lights?
Possibly, but I think he probably walks.
That to me would be a more safety, a more.
Probably walks through Union, because there's a number of other families that live over there, and he probably, you know, meets his friends or whatever. So just.
Yep.
Appreciate the committee having looked at it, and I'll keep an eye, and hopefully what we do will improve the situation, and if not, you know, we can come back.
I appreciate the work going in and to those in that neighborhood, and I know we get some correspondence. If those improvements, you know, feedback, and it can be positive feedback that says that indeed things are improved, or if there's still concerns, feel free to contact, I think, any one of us on the council, and that's part of our job. We're glad to do it, but that's the best way. It's hard to be everywhere at once, so we need that feedback from members in the neighborhoods involved. One thing, I was alerted, Counselor Smith, is I think you may have mentioned, it's a technicality, only the meeting, one of the two traffic and safety meetings for approval?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, I'm with you again. Okay, so were there any other comments about this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, I'd like to make the motion to accept the action sheet from our special hearing that we had held on the 21st.
So moved.
This is a particular one, this one, and the reason I didn't combine them, is this opens up, this was a special meeting, we had the Department of Transportation to open up a connector road from Route 1 bypass to Market Street. If you've been down along Market Street lately, you'll see there's a new set of lights. This is in the area where the Albicore Submarinas, there's a new set of lights there. I have, I've used it a few times already. It's, it seems to be working smoothly and nicely. I'm starting, since I live near the bypass, to increase traffic of people coming back to using the bypass again. Hopefully, this will be a nice way of starting to getting the businesses, the cars back to the businesses that along there that, since the bridge has been, has been closed, have been suffering as of late. This is a temporary connector. Once the, the bridge repairs are made, this will be closed down, and then later on, when they have to close the bypass again to do the, to do the final and true repairs, then this will be opened up again. And then this was also on a long-term plan the Department of Transportation had anyway, and so now we'll have two chances to have this open, to see how it works, to see if this is truly feasible and something that the state wants to keep open, and we'll continue to work with the Traffic and Safety Committee and the Department of Public Works, because there's, there's a lot of concerns that we already have about how do the lights for for timing or so forth, but we couldn't, because of this unique situation, we couldn't take those into account at this time.
Thank you. Unless there are questions or comments, we'll move on. I believe the motion has been made and was seconded. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. Next one is the, we had a meeting on the 3rd, make the motion to accept the action sheet of the 3rd of the Special Parking Committee meeting.
So moved.
And thank you, this is just further, unless someone has a specific question on it, we sat down with our traffic consultant and updated the work that was done, has a great amount of work that was done, and tried, and set priorities of where we wanted to go. So if someone has a specific question, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so Counselor Whitehouse?
I read with quite interest this report, and the priorities that was given in some recommendations, A, B, and C. I realize this committee has the authority to implement something, a change, as a pilot program, and I just hope, this is quite complex, a lot of changes, and I certainly hope they come before us in a little work session prior to implementing any of these recommendations, and especially when they've given certain priorities, A, B, and C, I questioned a couple of those priorities, and I just hope, you know, it's not implemented without our consent, because you do have the authority to do this, the Parking Committee does.
If there are major items, they'll come before the, because they'll have to be voted on by the, the Parking Committee, and certainly the chairman will advise the council when, if there is something of significance.
You know, residency packing has always been.
Oh, that certainly will come before the council.
And also.
No surprises on that one.
During the Wright Avenue parking lot.
Right, those things, Your Honor, if I might.
Sure.
I think, I think this was a, more or less a work session of the Parking Committee. We wanted to make sure we did not just leave the study on the shelf. What we wanted to do was sign priorities, so every year we're looking at these, and you did mention two that certainly would come back to the city council for full discussion.
All right. Okay. Good report. I like the report. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, and the last one, Your Honor, if, this is to accept the action sheet from our November 9 meeting. One, one thing I just want, I'll make the motion to accept it.
So moved.
Thank you. One thing I just did want to point out, and that is the Wright Avenue parking lot, and that is a change to a four-hour, from, from two-hour to four-hour, in the Wright Avenue parking lot. And also, this is a, to move the horse and carriage space that we've had downtown for quite some time, and don't have horse and carriage that's, that's in the downtown any longer, and to make that to possibly where the police cruiser will now park. So I just really want to point those out to the public.
Very good. Unless there are any questions or comments, we'll move this. Seeing none? All those in.
Aye.
Oh, no, no. I just want to make sure, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Right, thank you. Great work, as usual. Any final items that we've missed this evening? I see a hand. Counselor Whitehouse?
Under miscellaneous, may I, Your Honor?
Yes, yep.
I'd like to ask my fellow counselor, Ara Panalakis, if she's ready to give a dog report, because looking back at my minutes, the committee was supposed to give a report the first meeting in December, so I was wondering if that's coming.
I knew you was going to ask that. We have not had a chance to have a meeting.[1677.23]